Should be sad. I got tissue if you need it.
We were crying earlier.
We were crying earlier.
We were. We were crying earlier.
You guys want to borrow this?
Yes, in my right hand. We'll put it right there.
Joy's a tear, I get. Tears of joy, I get.
Tears.
Tears of joy.
I don't think there's things with white smiles off the face today.
Yeah, I know.
Is that right?
I'm just hiding those white smiles off the faces. I don't know what that means.
It's all fun and games. I don't know who you're gonna pick on next. Joe.
Okay. Ready? To call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, December nineteenth at seven twenty-four in the Board of Education meeting room. Like to recognize our visitors both here and online. If you'd like to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Southwest Looking School Board members and citizens. My name is Koshala and this is Mr. Hinkin's ELL class at Watkins Middle School.
Namaste, Southwest Looking School Board members and community. Meron namstichao on yo' Mr. Hinko' ELL classo, Watkins Middle School ma.
Hola, mi nombre es Loida y esta es la increíble clase de Mr. Hinko', la escuela secundaria waki.
Please join us as we salute our country with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was fabulous. Actually, that was good. All right, Mr. Jones, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani? Mrs. Engle?
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. Public participation, anything? All right. Motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. Passes? Presentation, we need an OFCC update by... Uh, we'll start with Robertson Construction, please.
Good afternoon. Wanted to make sure they kind of bring you up to speed on where we're at for this month. Moving directly into the floor plans for the area. I'll put a most the information in this point. The two-story area of Area C. We currently have this area under temporary... Temporary dry-in. We're proceeding with some of the metal framing and even the HVAC and some of the mechanical work in those classrooms. We're working to get this area enclosed to be able to keep proceeding with that. The single-story area, the classrooms in Area C. We are currently putting the structural steel and decking on that area. And that will follow with insulation, ice and water shield, and then the roof. So, quick move through this. The second-floor area of C, the masonry block is going up to the roof. That is probably close to forty percent complete for the second story. And that is one of the priorities to keep moving through. The student dining continues to kind of be our Achilles' heel in getting the masonry complete. And part of that is because we've kind of moved away from that and moving into the two classroom pods to keep those moving quicker and keep steel... The steel erector moving on-site. Our goal through this winter is to not let the steel erector leave the site. So we are moving the mason around to keep areas open for him to keep proceeding. The two-story area on Area A. We are putting the second... Second-story floor arjoys and decking down. As we go through that and get that done before the slab on deck, there was actually a course schedule for this week that will probably get pushed a little bit, but depending on weather, we're gonna try to get that in. And we've started the masonry on the single-story of Area A, which we need portions of that to create the catwalk, or not catwalk, but the hallway that goes across student dining for the view down into student dining.
I heard catwalk. Thank you. They're at the high school today.
There's some pictures of the Area C two-story that it's nice to see. We've got some HVAC in the ceiling, wall spraying, soffit spraying. So that work is progressing well. Over at the high school. As you know, we got the masonry wall issue in the auditorium. So that area is just right now under evaluation and inspection. We're going into cleanup and then we'll go into rework of that area when feasible. In reality, that area is not a huge impact because the height of those walls being fifty-some feet, we can't really tent those in and work in cold weather. It's not feasible to tent something fifty feet tall. So, the masons are now working in Area F and G. They're gonna start bringing those masonry walls up to bearing. And then, within the next couple of weeks, we are also going to have another masonry crew working in H and J. So the classroom pods should start coming up. We've completed some of the masonry around the kitchen and mechanical rooms. Those are the latest walls that you've seen the tents on back here. And we're gonna complete those to get to this section. And this is one of the critical sections. We're working all the underground utilities through here to get them into the classroom pods so that we can have temporary electric plus heat in those areas as we keep proceeding. But there's one more tall wall that goes between the auditorium and the gymnasium that will allow us to start enclosing this middle section. We have steel and decking that has started on the gymnasium. Then when they finish the gym, they will jump over to the seating section of the auditorium and do the same thing. So you'll see two of those high roofs going in. The next area we want to try to get to is this center section to close that all off. So, again, the steel erector is now on-site for the high school. The goal is to keep the work in front of him so that he doesn't leave the site. Hopefully, bringing in the second full masonry crew. We might even be able to start looking down the road as it starts getting into late February, early March, bringing a second structural steel erector company in to help expedite things. So, there's a lot of planning, a lot of reworking that's happened at the high school over the last couple of weeks. One of our issues or challenges is in Area H with all the science rooms. We've got acid waste piping that needs to go in under the slab. And that has some prespringent weather requirements. So that work is going pretty slow. They're back. When they have to fuse the pipe together, they bring a pop-up tent out. We put heat in it, get it warmed up, and then they do the fusion and then move over to the next area. So, that's going a lot slower than we wanted and the timing of that isn't great. But it's moving forward so that we can start looking at potentially getting the concrete down for these two areas. As far as financially, where we're at on the project, it's always good and I still am happy to be able to say right now we're giving you money back from the deducts that we're able to use on the site work package. I'm keeping those highlighted because I don't get to see those very often. It's a negative number. But hopefully, we can keep them for another month or two as a negative. Contingencies on the site equipment package. We've used about half of our construction manager contingency. And on the four-fives, we've used about a third of it to date. And the high school is very minimal. Looking ahead and on the site package, we're pretty much dormant. As I said last month, whatever we get from site between here and probably March, it is just bonus. They are out of the critical hazard. It is not a concern. For the four-five building, again, we're gonna continue with trying to get as much masonry up to bearing elevations, keep the steel crews moving, keep the roof decking going on, and then try to keep the roof there as much as possible. So, they're jumping from section to section to keep that happening. Somewhat the same thing now at the high school. Completing some underground work and also trying to get as much masonry bearing up as possible. As far as RFIs and semittals, really nothing on the site project. At the four-five, we're now about thirty-five percent complete on semittals. We don't have any open RFIs, which is good news. At the high school, we're fifty percent complete and we've only got three open RFIs. So, information is flowing back and forth a little bit better. It's been an improvement since last month, so that's always positive. Quality control, we've had two additional pre-installation meetings since last... I was here last time and that was with fire protection materials and methods and as well as plumbing material and methods. Safety. We have a safety audit December fifth. And that resulted in four or five minor issues at both sites. And then on December sixth, we had the masonry issue. So, even when we are watching, looking, and trying to take care of, things can still happen. And then just some of the pictures. On the left-hand side, the Area C classrooms I talked about. Actually seeing some of the heating and ventilation going up. And then your bottom right, you can see some of the wall framing and soffits being done. The lower bottom and the top are structural steel, both at the gymnasium and the second floor of Area A. Then over at the high school, not a whole lot to see. Concrete slabs that are down, masonry walls going up. And then some of the views of each building. Our normal kind of front door view at the top and then each building below that. Back page also has some access to another view of each building. Any questions?
They're still on track to be done on time.
Yes. Yes. We are not giving up the schedule. We're making changes in sequencing and moving some people around to do some things a little bit differently. But we are still moving forward with masonry, which is the critical aspect of the project right now.
Were you able to open up the entrance off of Route forty? So you're able to bring in?
Yes, it is open and we are using outdoor deliveries.
Okay.
We actually had, I think, nine or ten loads of structural steel coming in. I think Wednesday for Area H, K, F, G, E, and V. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot of...
Yes.
We've seen a big expenditure come. Just to go down through what we have here. Basically, we moved the site where we are as far as what's going on on the site, into the buildings. Edna Elementary, the design well, that submission was submitted on a spring day. Everybody's starting to look at that and pull the estimates together. Watkins Middle School renovation. We have the... We have the estimate from the... Well, the estimate from the CMR is in process and we're waiting for our estimates to come along so we can start the reconciliation process. Hazardous material abatement survey has been done. And I got the proposal yesterday to... For the rest of the consulting, not the removal of that. I think with that renovation. The milestone dates is basically your monthly schedule. We seem to be lagging a little bit on the design side, but I don't think that's gonna impact the schedule. We can be able to float in that process. And it goes, I'm not gonna promise you the basis this time. So, I'm gonna go through the risks. We really don't have any current tasks for the bodies. We're gonna be really busy with our facilities to secure the safety of the future. That's probably gonna have to be next week. The risk, we always have a simple one, we have two schedule impacts. The estimate, budget reconciliation, GMP negotiations for these final four. The allowances for the later packages, we have signage. Outdoor furniture and some other things. Wetlands keeping, making sure that we define within those allowances. And weather. Everything was crossed. My action items tonight. And next time, I'm gonna bring you a change order log so you can see where we are on contingency. When we pulled the site out, it became difficult to track on our widget because we have to break it out so many different ways to maintain that silo of pulling the site out. So we've been pulling that out separately, tracking it. I just feel like it's not getting in here. So I'm gonna bring you a change order log so you can see the drawdown of contingency. And it is all pretty good. We're pretty efficient. Because we did have a big credit. But we are currently about eighty-five million dollars committed. That's big. And we are currently, project expenditures are almost ten. And I would imagine if that steel company goes up, there's stored material on that. Are there any questions?
Thank you. All right. Request to speak on agenda items. Teamsters Local Four Thirteen and Southwest Looking Education Association. All right, we need approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve either one or both of those.
Motion to approve four A and B.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. Motion passes. Got a financial report. We can get a motion to approve and then we can discuss.
Motion approval? Second.
Mr. Jones?
Included with the information is the executive summary for the month ending November thirtieth. It's fairly routine month, nothing really out of the ordinary. Our expenditure is about one percent higher than we anticipated at this point. I mean, our receipts are one percent higher, which is good. Our expenditures are slightly higher, but overall, we're still working better than we expect to be at this time. Like, it was a fairly routine month. Nothing really out of the ordinary. Be glad to answer any questions you have about it, but nothing too exciting to talk about.
All right, any questions? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. All right, that motion passes. We need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of employment or compensation of a public employee.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
We are in executive session at seven forty-two PM.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. Item to prorate of profession on that?
Nope.
All right. Add that as I. We need a motion for A through I then. Motion approval?
Do you know anybody along there? We want to keep the percentage of sub-replacements every day as high as possible, so.
Have we done any... I know in the past it was, there was discussion about pay. Are we still competitive?
Yes. Yes, we're very competitive. I don't think they necessarily should go.
Okay.
We're losing a lot of good jobs to your jobs, you know, healthcare and this.
Okay.
It's taking quite a few of our... And we have a lot of maternity leaves to share as well.
A lot of maternity leaves.
Again, just spread the word if you can. If you're not qualified.
Is it pretty much a daily basis? We don't have enough to cover everybody. Okay.
We'll be okay next week, though.
And probably the week after that. All right, so far so good.
Good one, Rex.
All right. All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. That passes. We have item eight A. Superintendent contract. We need a motion to approve the employment of Casey Perkins as superintendent effective January first, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
There's a fight. That's pretty good. There's a fight.
Damn, she moved that first.
All right, is there any discussion? No discussion. All right. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Does she want to say anything? Just keep it short.
No, just thank you for not taking me. I'm really excited.
Okay, we are too. Number nine, we have multiple business items. Yes, let's see, we need... Motion to select the president pro temp for the January organizational meeting.
I motion that can Engle serve as pro temp?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Do I have those things?
No, you don't have to. Definitely have to.
All right, that passes. Now we need to schedule a date.
We already had the schedule.
Yeah, I think we...
We talked about it. We never scheduled officially. We talked about it as part of the organizational meeting for the two sessions.
Right.
So, if you could do B and C together, if you wanted to be on the same night, regular meeting and organizational meeting. Because we originally talked about that Monday before, which was like the sixteenth, thirteenth, I mean?
Yes.
Thirteenth.
That's what I have.
We talked about the thirteenth and we talked about doing both of them at the same time. Organization meeting at seven, then the regular meeting to follow immediately thereafter.
Can we still do that?
Yes, that's what you do, yes.
Motion B and C, both organizational and regular meeting to be held on January thirteenth. Monday, January thirteenth, 2020 at seven PM or six-thirty? Do we need extra time?
Yeah, no, it takes about fifteen. Or maybe it takes about fifteen minutes.
I feel like it takes longer, but seven PM.
Here in the board meeting room.
Here in the board meeting room.
Yes. All right, so we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani? I'm sorry. Mrs. Engle?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, item D. Certificates of participation. Want a motion first and then discussion, Mr. Jones, on that one? All right, we need a motion to approve the resolution for the certificates of participation. For the resolution for that, please.
Motion to approve nine D.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
As I mentioned, this is basically a resolution to authorize to issue up to twelve-point-five billion dollars in certificates of participation. The purpose of this would be twofold, is one, to pay for the new athletic facility and bleacher upgrade that we're looking to doing next to an existing football track. That's approximately three-point-eight million dollars. And then anything over and above that would be used to cover any kind of overages in our existing CFAB project. Again, at this point, we're only looking at issuing the three-point-eight million for the existing facilities. I mean, the new facilities we're going to build. And as, you know, the GMPs, the LFI MOUs come forth and Clay overestimates the budget again. Just kidding, Clay, hard time.
Adds more catwalks.
Obviously, when we go to SD, we go to DD, we have to have the money in hand to move forward. So we're hoping the high school, the high school middle school renovation and then the Kirksville task is not over budget. That's the ideal plan. I'd rather plan it for it in case it is, hoping it's not. So, that's the only thing to do, give us authority to. Obviously, we'd move forward three-point-eight million early next fall, I mean, next spring. And then the rest, kind of as you approve the LFI MOU for each building, that's gonna tell us how much there is a budget overage. At that point, we'll have to issue to cover the budget overages so that we have the money on hand, because we have to have on hand by the time we actually go to the GMP. You know, we might be able to move some money out of general fund to cover it for a little bit, then as the money comes in, you know, move the money back if we have to. But that gives us the ability to do that. We don't have to. Maybe we're doing okay and we have interest money that we can cover with or something. But this gives us most flexibility, I think, is what we need to do that. So, and this will be all paid from the general fund. No, I'm sorry, from the permanent improvement fund. And right now, looking at initial, we're looking at probably twenty-year issuances. So, with the twenty-year issuance, basically, this full amount, that basically, we still have about four-hundred thousand left over in BI to cover purchases of school buses. And that's very important to pay for the basic half-bill maintenance and then a little extra to any kind of thing that comes up that we have to cover out from re-improvement. So, I'm trying to keep a little bit of a cushion there so that if something comes up, that we have some money to pay for it too. So I asked the board to please approve this resolution as...
Any questions, Mr. Jones? All right, any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
That motion passes. We need a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Southwest Looking Education Association regarding the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System pilot.
So moved.
I'll second that. I think, actually, Ms. Perkins, I think this is something we've already got in place. They've been using this. We're piloting this for the state, correct? And...
She's gotten a union approval already?
Already, and we just needed, the board had to kind of, after the fact?
Yes.
Approve it.
It was Ms. coming to board for approval because we are modifying the existing teacher contract with these changes. So, or do that, does take board approval. That was just Ms. Casey, is there anything else you want to add about the MOU with the teacher union?
Oh, sorry. I have to go to the front row. No, we just started it earlier this year. We swapped off the Maliki MOU. So it's going really well.
Okay. All right. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. We have the 2021 High School Course Description Guide. Need a motion to approve the changes to the High School Course Description Guide for the 2021 school year.
Motion approval of changes.
Second.
All right, any questions?
I would just like to thank you for answering my questions that I had about this. All in all, I'm okay with it. My biggest, or my concerns deal with the CCP. And I know by statute, we can't charge for that. But to me, it's troublesome that we have required classes for graduation like English where we have a thirty-dollar fee. So if you're a junior and you're doing regular English, then you have... So if you're a junior and you're doing regular English, then you have to pay that thirty-dollar fee. But if you're in CCP, you don't have to pay anything. To me, that's a disparity that I, I don't like. But there's nothing, you know, we can really do about that. It was just, as I was going through this, it was just noticeable how the required classes, there is a fee, but the CCP classes, right? So, that's it.
Am I mistaken that CCP classes, they would still count towards a graduation requirement, right? Okay.
How, how soon? I know several of the classes are all based on if we get approval of the staff. Do you know when that?
Oh, for the, uh, the AP Physics. We, we made the request of Shawnee State, we're just waiting for your.
Just waiting, okay.
I mean, and that's really not going to be that problematic because we still have physics in. We still have, we still have physics built into the course description guide. It becomes a staffing issue, offering three sections, physics, college parent plus physics, and AP physics.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha, okay. I thought there were a couple of them with it, it was just the physics classes, that all it was? Oh, okay. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
The passes, treasures items, we've got items A through C?
Yeah, I'm going to do all three of them if you are.
Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve A through C, number ten, A through C.
I'll second that.
Donations, we always appreciate those, with a thank you. Again, same purposes of these come in, we try to bring to your attention, to approve them. These traditional ones just came in. And then the last one is our health insurance renewal. We've been having a really good year, this past school year, we've had a really bad year, best calendar year. So, as I mentioned, that, you know, we pay a hundred percent premium to the insurance company and the insurance, insurance company paid a hundred and six percent in expenses, which means they lost six percent. And usually, they want you to run in the seventy, the eight, eighty percent range. So they lost about thirty percent. So, as I said, the first renewal we got in was a fifty-six percent increase. And then our insurance consultant came back to them and said, you know, that won't work. They came back in with a twenty-four percent. And then our insurance consultant reminded them that last year, when we moved to Anthem, that we got a guarantee that it will not exceed fifteen percent. So, without that guarantee, we would have saw a much larger increase based on our, how we ran this past calendar year. So, this started the fact January first, so there is a fifteen percent increase. It's still a large increase, but based on how we ran this past year, it could have been a lot worse. Then next year, we're probably going to have to move because they're going to probably definitely jack it up next year because there is no cap.
So the guarantee was only for two years?
Only for one year, so only for this renewal. So next calendar year, we'll probably have to go out to market, hopefully we have a much better year.
Yeah.
If we don't have a much better year, then it's going to be, it's going to be a big hit for us. And when I did the budget, I already knew where we were running, so I already included fifteen percent increase in the budget. So it's not, okay, more than what we already have budget for this calendar year, for this fiscal year. So I asked the board to approve all three items, please.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zini? My doggy, I'm sorry. Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
He's not here. That's a rumor.
All right, that passes. All right, superintendent's items.
I have just a few. First one is attendance, and if you noticed, as far as I know, looking back twenty, thirty years, first time we've ever been over four thousand four hundred students, or forty-four oh seven. That would be up one hundred and forty-nine students since the beginning of the year. And as you know, I'm retiring, it was just around thirty-eight hundred when I came. So we've had close to five to six hundred new students in that short period of time. The OSFC builds a new building for three hundred and fifty students or more. So obviously, we have a lot of new kids. And, and that's something that we're going to have to overcome with conditions. Now, speaking of that, I will say that I had an email from the state this past week where the OFCC has reached out and they would like for me to write a new enrollment projection material based on growth that's happening right now, the enrollment numbers that I've been sharing. I plan to do that when I start January sixth in my new role. Not sure where that's going to go, if it goes anywhere. But I do believe there are handful of schools in the same or similar situation, probably around the Columbus area. Seems to be growing quite a bit, but I really don't know if it will go anywhere, but it's a lot better than when we were hearing no. So, I don't know if you have any questions about that. Probably be stealing a few of the notebooks out of my office that have potential plans and hopefully those plans, well, I'll show them, and they won't accept them this time. We tried to do it last time, but it did not, they just didn't take them. They just said, well, you're not really going to have that happen. Unfortunately, we did. Back to the numbers, I forgot to mention, we have no classes under three hundred anymore. Lowest class is three-ten. We have classes of three sixty-eight, three sixty-three, three fifty-two, and three forty-nine. Those are the, the top four. And that's sixth grade, I'm sorry, I'll start at the lower. Sixth grade has the highest, third grade, tenth grade, and first grade. So, I mean, we're spread out, so we have some good numbers. And I, I guess, I'll answer questions, I do have one other thing, if you will give me just a minute or two. That's all right. It's just one of those little thank you, unless you have questions. I put this out on the webpage, or actually, I didn't personally, because probably I don't know how to put it out there. But I had it put out there, so I thought I'd read it tonight. It's just a little thank you for everybody, so I'll start out. I'll probably mess it up, but there's good intention behind the whole thing. It's never easy to say goodbye. As you may already know, I'll be retiring at the end of the calendar year, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. After spending thirty-three years of public education, the past seven and a half as your superintendent, it's time for me to enter a new phase in my life and begin, begin new challenges. As I look back on my time here, the number of talented people that I've had the honor to work with alongside are too numerous to mention individually. Therefore, I want all administrators, board members, certified classified staff members, past and present, to know that my success has always been based on your success. Thank you for your dedication and hard work. To the residents of Southwest Licking, nothing we have accomplished over the years would have been possible without the support of a great community. In particular, many parents who volunteered countless hours, their personal time to help our schools. I wish to send my heartfelt thanks for embracing our students and schools. To the students of Southwest Licking, it has always been my passion to provide you with various opportunities and to expose you to the very best teachers in the profession, profession has to offer, I'm sorry. As superintendent, you get to enjoy seeing students grow into valuable and active members of the community. It was with this thought, I want to thank the student body for the memories shared throughout the years. There are still many challenges facing our district, including such as a growing enrollment, overcrowded facilities, funding, and new state mandates. However, I truly believe that all of these issues can be overcome if the Warrior Nation remembers to work together. So in closing, I would like to use a familiar phrase that many of you have come to enjoy on those windy, cold, and snowy, full, calamity day mornings. This is Bob Janelle, superintendent of the Southwest Licking Schools, notifying you not of a school closing or delay, but simply to say a final goodbye. Thank you again.
Well, on behalf of your school board, we would like to say thank you for the time well spent. And a little something from us.
Well, thank you, thank you. Would you like me to open it? It won't explode or anything.
No, no.
There's some white powder in there.
You can X-ray it.
Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I would, I didn't have anything in there, but I do wish Casey a lot of luck. She has a good support staff around her, and I think she'll do a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I can go on if you like. Casey would always say if I didn't have anything out there, I'd ask more questions.
How about, how about request to speak on non-agenda items, Teamsters Local four thirteen and Southwest Licking Education Association? How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
We are adjourned at eight eighteen PM.
The turning of the tassel.